Hey, what's up? It's your boy DJ L7. As you know, I am interviewing every single person running for, you know, every elected position here in New York. And I have one of the candidates here with me today. Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Dan Kellman. I'm running for city council in the 7th council district to succeed Mark Levine, who is term limited and running for higher office.
Okay. Where is the 7th district?
7th is on the west side of Manhattan, and it runs from 96th Street to 165th Street. It covers a wide variety of neighborhoods, including the Upper West Side, Manhattan Valley, Morningside Heights, Manhattanville, basically West Harlem, and a tiny slice of Washington Heights.
And West Harlem, actually, some of those brownstones are known to like really have raised in value. A lot of old politics is there, and I mean, that's a powerful district right there. Yeah?
It is. It is. I mean, some of them are in the district. As you get further north, the district's a bit like a triangle where it's kind of pointy on top and wide at the bottom. And some of the nicer brownstones are in the district, but there's also a large section that are been cut out and stuck in the knives.
Actually, some of the things that you're already saying right now is really awesome because I can tell we're kind of off to the races, right? So the thing is that some of the things that you mentioned in terms of first off, you said you were running for the city council, and you said term limited. That's one of the first things that you said. And that's actually, just so you know, the city council right now, why don't you, you know where I'm going with that, right? What's the story?
I know where you're going with that.
Where am I going with that?
Sure. So, I mean, more than two thirds of the city council is turning over because of term limits. So we're actually going to see a massive shift in the leadership in city government. And perhaps that's one of the key essential factors about why I'm running for office. I've lived in the district my entire life, 50 years, and I have a lot of life experience that I can bring to bear in the event that I'm successful in getting elected to the city council. With so much changing happening this year, it's essential that we have people who sort of know what they're doing and have experience to be able to help the districts who desperately need it as they're recovering from the pandemic and as we grow anew.
You know, there's incredible potential for change here. And the thing is that sometimes newcomers can have good stuff going on. But one of the things that you'll notice about, what I think is really necessary is already, right, you can see that there's a certain amount of depth to what you're saying. Already, I'm able to pick out certain things and say that there's a deeper story going on. And
You're perceptive.
Yeah, people who are, while people who are experienced have this appreciation, have this understanding, which is vital in this game, really, if you want to be handling a complex issue like New York City. So, you know, maybe it's like someone like Andrew Yang, who's coming in from the outside, you know, all of a sudden trying to like brush up on new topics, might not be the right choice versus someone who, you know, maybe he does have a good understanding. You know, I mean, that's for the voters to decide, but I have a deep appreciation for people who really understand the issues on a deeper level, which you definitely seem to have. Yeah?
Thank you. I think what we're also talking about is it's not just that we shouldn't, newcomers are fine. Newcomers are great. I mean, I think we should be looking, we're going to need everybody and all of the ideas that we have. Folks have been here for a minute, and folks have been here for just a second.
Yeah, but newcomers are easily fooled. They're easily led astray, and they don't really have that depth of experience or, you know, I think that there's a lot to be said for.
I agree with you, but also I think it's, the thing for a newcomer is, and this isn't particular to Yang, but to any newcomer, is I think you should be able to demonstrate not just that you've put your time in, because I don't want it to be about, well, you paid your dues, you're in line, you're next. That's not how it should work.
Well, that's the worst.
But I do believe that the work that I've done has demonstrated my core values. I believe that when people see that I'm, who I am as a candidate, it won't just simply be that I've put in time, but that I also have demonstrated what I'm saying is based on what I've accomplished in the district as well.
Okay. So to tell you the truth, we look at the, we take a look at what's going on here in New York City, like geographic locations, and we can see there are some pretty big machines going on. And actually, some of the most highest level machines that are entrenched are in Harlem and in Flushing. You know, you have the DNC chair, vice chair, Grace Meng. What's his name? Michael Blake or something like that, also coming from South Bronx, like Harlem area. Very strong machinery in place. What do you know about that? And how can, you know, we help to maybe throw some of that stuff off? Because honestly, there's a lot of waste going on, protectionism, people not getting any, there's no accountability. How can we start to address that?
The issue for me is, machines can sometimes serve a purpose of being able to elevate particularly communities of color that have previously not had access to power. And that is important. And the challenge is also that if you're coming out of a particular political machine, that you also show that you assert independence and you think for yourself as opposed to just whatever the machine tells you to do. And in my district, there's a bunch of political machinations going around, and some of the candidates are more independent than others, and some are not. Some are really kind of just sort of puppets of the machines that control them. And I think that the community demands a certain amount of integrity amongst their elected officials and people who are willing to think for themselves as opposed to being told what to do. And the key factor there is, have you ever seen a candidate who, amongst the people that are supporting them, ever do something different from what the person who's supporting them has done? You know, where have they parted ways? And if you don't see a difference of opinion, if you don't see a difference in action between the candidate and the political machine they're connected to, that makes me question their ability to think for themselves and make their own decisions. And that's important to be able to demonstrate for a community, because they want to know that you're not beholden to, you know, sort of an extra political machine, but that you're actually beholden to the people who elect you. And that's why I'm running. I'm not beholden to a political machine. And the people who elect me are the people that I'm going to listen to, not a few people whispering in the, you know, in a back room in my ear.
Okay. So let's talk about, another thing that's interesting is, a lot of people that will be addressing some of these issues later, talking about like reopening, defund the police, right? These other, like, these issues that are kind of like hot at the moment. But the thing is that you already said your expertise is in affordable housing and just whether you really understand or know about it or not, real estate developers and the whole entire, you know, the money that's around, you know, property taxes and things like that is really at the heart and soul of so much that goes on in New York City. Whether you understand that or not, rent prices, you know, zoning, districting, you know, community neighborhood, you know, these things are all determined by housing things, NYCHA's, deep in it, HUD has huge contracts. Those are some of the biggest things that the city does, right, yeah, versus the state, right? City also takes care of police department, things like that. So coming from that angle of the affordable housing, what's, you know, that's kind of like a broad term. Maybe you could tell, as in terms of your working in terms of that particular field, what's the accomplishment that you're most proud of?
Sure. I mean, I'll ask, you made a couple of points, and I just want to touch on them. A lot of the stuff that you made reference to falls under the extremely unsexy name of land use. But it is one of the responsibilities in the city council is land use. And it's about zoning, and it's about, and it's about real estate. At this point, I want to make it really clear that I'm not taking any money from real estate developers. Not all of my opponents who are running for the seat in the 7th can say that. But I am not. I have turned down any money I've received from real estate developers so that my conscience and my perspective on land use is clear. I mean, affordable housing actually doesn't technically really have much of a definition. It's pretty obscure. It can run all the way up into numbers that most of you folks, you and I, wouldn't consider to be affordable. But what I'm talking about it is what the city hasn't done and needs to do. The city, and particularly this mayor, has made a mess of affordable housing. What we really need is more housing stock for people who make less than $40,000 a year. And right now, we're building at much higher numbers. And unfortunately, what that's doing is we're creating what's technically affordable in terms of what the broad average New Yorker could afford. But in communities like District 7, where most folks are making, on average, less than $40,000 a year, we're building housing at higher price points, which may technically be affordable, but it's inaccessible to the people who live there. So we're actually building affordable housing that's gentrifying our community, if you can get your head around that. We're building affordable housing that nobody can afford. And that's crazy for us to be supporting. And it's city policy. We're using city tax dollars, your mine, my dollars, all your listeners, viewers' dollars to pay for housing that people in our community can't afford. And it's actually pushing the people out who desperately need to.
Let's help to understand, right? And the thing is that earlier, I actually, it all kind of ties together. So you said that you don't take money from the real estate developers, and some people may not understand. Like, so what if you take the money from the real estate developers? Why are they a problem? Who even cares, right? Then you talk about, right, this particular issue, right? And the thing is that we can see that, okay, one example that I could take, for instance, is sometimes developers go against the common good. And I'll give you an example. For example, there's something called RAD. You know what I'm talking about? Of course you do, right? Yeah. What's RAD?
So it's Real Estate Demonstration Project. And the challenge about RAD is that it's an attempt at trying to inject private dollars into NYCHA public housing. And the challenge with it is that, well, it sounds good, that we're going to, you know, the property is still owned by the city, by NYCHA, and the buildings are going to be leased out to private developers and private management companies, and they're going to inject capital into it. And there are some instances where RAD has actually worked, at least in the near term, at fixing up some properties. A bunch of properties, Ocean Village in Brooklyn, and Rockaways in Queens, excuse me, has actually been transformed because of RAD. But their main issue is that what you're doing with RAD is you're moving folks from Section 9, which is public housing. This is a technical expression. Section 9 is the part of the federal housing legislation. It's called Section 9 Housing, Public Housing. And you're putting into Section 8 Housing. Some of your listeners may have heard of Section 8 before. That involves affordable housing and vouchers and a bunch of other things. What it's doing, though, is it's weakening the strength of the housing as permanently affordable and permanently for people and not for private sector.
Also, another reason, another thing that I want to add at this point is, at the beginning discussion of RAD, right? RAD, like UBI, whatever, all these things, I'm kind of giving away one of the later topics. But the thing is that there was some discussion at the beginning about, you know, private dollars is not always bad because you take a look at the people who are poor who live in those communities, yeah? If you really want to give them agency, you really want to make them, you know, they say they don't care about the hood, they treat it like trash because they don't own it. But if they became owners, right, in that community, then you would see the value and the and the care for that community go up within that population if they could buy their own homes. So people talked about it in the beginning, but then what happened is the developers said, oh my God, we could get our hands on some Manhattan real estate. Gimme, gimme, gimme! And they came in, they pushed hard, and all of a sudden, you know, that discussion is kind of out the window about the private citizens being able to possibly buy the projects that they live in and have lived in for maybe even generations. And that's
So I favor enabling public housing residents to buy into their units, probably, not to get too technical, but into something called low-income equity co-ops, which actually already currently exists. There's thousands of units. And District 7 is the most number of HDFC co-ops, which are low-income co-ops. Many, in some cases, were abandoned buildings that were owned by the city and then were sold back to tenants, some of which were squatters for, you know, for a few, for tens or hundreds of dollars in exchange for putting them back on the tax rolls. And they actually have wound up becoming sort of the biggest source of low-income housing homeownership in the country and substantially contributed to the rehabilitation of a lot of neighborhoods. Because you have people, as you said, who sort of were invested in the housing stock. But I want to come back to RAD for a second, which is the danger about RAD is that it winds up weakening the ability of that public housing to remain forever affordable and in the public. And while in the near term, you may see some improvements, some cosmetic improvements, and those cosmetic improvements can be substantial, in the long run, you may actually wind up eliminating some of that housing forever. And I don't want to take that risk. The city has talked about saying, oh, you know, if we sell off all of the undeveloped spaces on NYCHA campuses, we'll be able to use all that money and we'll fix up NYCHA. NYCHA is facing a $40 billion problem. That's 40 billion with a B right now. And even the city's estimation is that if they sell all that real estate, they're only going to get a billion dollars. So you take $40 billion, and you take away a billion, and what do you have? $39 billion. I mean, it's basically not even moving the needle at all. It's a rounding error. We're going to take the only thing that we desperately need in this city, which is available land, and we're going to build luxury housing on it, and it's only going to build, give us a billion dollars. It's not even going to make much of a dent in the current housing backlog of repairs that we have in NYCHA as it is. What are we doing? What I think we should be doing is, to borrow a phrase, you said defund the police, and I was actually thinking we should be talking about rebuild NYCHA. We should be taking those vacant sites on NYCHA campuses and working closely with the tenant associations of people who live in those buildings and on those campuses and say, look, we're going to take this parking lot, which isn't being heavily used. We're going to build a brand new building on it. We're going to put a parking lot in the basement. See, all get your parking back. And then we're going to say, everybody who's in this building over here that's currently in, you know, it's got rats and mold, and it's falling down. We're going to move everybody from the old building into the new building. And then we're going to rehab the old building.
So that sounds good, right?
And then we can do that over and over again.
That sounds good, right? But when you look at NYCHA's history, yeah, it's so bad. You know, I mean, their implementation has been really horrible. Yeah, so
I mean, I think what we need also
Why would you trust them, you know, to handle?
And you shouldn't. And I think the trust has been broken, and I think the way to bring it back is we have to bring in nonprofit organizations that particularly work with affordable housing communities and have them have a stake in it. We need to have communities of faith involved so that people really have communities and organizations and people that they trust to begin to build bonds to build it back. Because right now, what we have right now is tenants and residents at odds with NYCHA management, and with good reason, because NYCHA management has been systematically ignoring or destroying a lot of the integrity of the buildings and the way that people can live there for decades, which is, you know, which is tragic and needs to be, and will be stopped under a new administration.
Yeah, so we're going to return to this issue of housing and stuff because it is a big player in this game. But I'm sure a lot of people out there, there's a lot of other issues that are also big that are going on too. So we're going to get into those other issues, and also have some political allies that I work with, and I want to make sure that their issues are covered as well. And also, maybe I can help you patch into other people in the campaign. I have some plans coming up for some pretty cool, what is it, panel discussions on housing especially. Yeah? So the first one I'm going to ask is, do you support Julian Assange?
Do I support Julian Assange? No one's ever asked me that before.
I have.
I mean, I think the WikiLeaks and the ability to expose some of the government secrets was overall a good thing. I mean, he seems kind of nuts, honestly. So, but I mean, I guess I'm in favor of open information and reducing secrets. So, okay, yeah. I mean, I, you know, I, not to get into too much depth on Julian Assange. I mean, he's also got a whole issue about whether he's been accused of sexual assault. And I can't tell if that was, where that is on that right now, where that stands.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah.
I mean, I sort of support, I guess maybe I support on the information side of it, but his personality and his habits seem quite questionable. So.
Well, you know, they always stay
Can I go have these? Like, yes, on one, on intellectual property and open secrets, yes.
That's 100% fair.
Maybe on his behavior, no. So.
Well, you know, he still has to be convicted on that, right? That's only allegations. There's been no trial. So we have, we still have to wait on that. So, you know, that's fair. He deserves a trial on that too. You know, I mean, if he's guilty, then he's guilty, you know what I mean? And he deserves his time. But he's not being held on that. He's being held on something completely different, you know what I mean? So I figure on that. But, look, also, just so you know, since I am talking to everybody who's running for city office, I can do things like say, oh, I got like, you know, 70% of everybody who's running for the city to say this for Assange, and then make that happen, right? And then do, so that's part of this plan. And also, if you have something later that you want to come at me with, right? Yeah, and be like, yo, Ed, I want to get this message out to the other people. Boom. I can do that because exactly what I'm doing right here. Let's go on to the next one. Do you support UBI?
Yeah. Although I want to be clear that the UBI that's been proposed by some candidates, including Yang and some others, would get rid of all of the other sort of funding within the social safety network, social safety net. And I'm a little concerned about that. I do want to explore UBI as a way of being able to provide income particularly to lower-income New Yorkers who could use the resources. I'm not sure if I want to get rid of all of the other benefits that many avail themselves of. You know, a dependent children, and I mean, I want to be careful. I want it to be supplemental, not replacement.
You know, and I think that's, that's a common, that's a common caveat that's made, but I do appreciate that. And honestly, like I said before, I want a lot of my, especially the newer listeners, especially Yang Gang, I know there's a lot of new people in there, right? Whether you have respect for my, like, you know, I put in time with you guys. People who are more experienced will see more nuance, and people who are more beginner will just say yes or no to things. And, you know, experience teaches you that the palm is a little bit more complex. So, look, you know, it might be aligned with, there, yes, might sound good and align with what you feel or want to happen. But one of the reasons why we talk about this topic is to really help you understand things on a deeper level. And he's bringing up some good, there's other issues on UBI, but I like your answer. Thank you for having some nuance on that. Yeah? It's just my preference. Some people will prefer it the other way, right? Okay, let's go on to, the thing is that, look, I also work with the disabled. And people who are disabled, the thing is that right now, there are, there's a permission for them to receive sub-minimum wage. And minimum wage is barely subsistence wage, and a lot of times, people with disabilities have higher costs due to other things. Would you be, would you be willing to support, you know, minimum wage for people with disabilities?
Absolutely. It's on my website. I have a disabilities issues platform. That's very much part of it.
I'm very thankful. You know, a lot of times, me and my friend Mark from the Tulsi campaign, we go to different candidates, and they just don't have time to talk about disability issues, and we don't bring them, we don't break them over the coals for it. But it's disappointing. It really freaking is, you know what I mean? And thank you for taking care of it.
And I want to say that I'm not even, because disabilities come in so many different flavors. I've been, you know, getting educated myself. I had a whole conversation today with a resident neighbor voter who is visually disabled. And I realized in the course of talking with him that my website is not accessible for someone who's visually disabled. And that was, I was like, you know, that, I got it. And I said, he's actually had some experience with it, and he was going to follow up with me and try and see if we can figure out a way to make my website more, even more accessible. Still, I still have a lot to learn, but
You know, we'll have, why don't we have a panel discussion and invite a whole bunch of, you know, different council members so they can be more appreciative of going into the, you know, going into office. That would be great, right?
Sure.
So thanks for being a leader on that, man. There's not too many out there. You really do stand out that way.
You're kind. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Another person I'm allied with is the trans community. So the people in trans community, you know, transvestites, a lot of times, they face discrimination. And the thing is that it's really tough because even if you make the law, if the community wants to drive them out of public housing or whatever, they find a way to do it, you know what I mean? So there's like the question of, you know, how can we do it in a common sense way? But how do we also achieve it, you know, in a way that, you know, passing a law, like, so what, you know what I mean? So how can we make sure, or what can we do to make sure that they're better taken care of? Because it's a tough cookie to crack.
Right. I mean, I was pleased to see that the United States Legislature passed the walking-well trans ban repeal, which is great because that at least reduces the likelihood of law enforcement arresting someone who just happens to be trans. And I was also pleased to see that over the course of the summer, while there was a great deal of discussion about Black Lives Matter, and also there was a frequent pivot to trans lives matter. And that's important. In the trans community, trans, trans community mortality rate is quite high compared to the rest of the LGBTQ community. And particularly, trans people of color have the highest risk of essentially premature death by violence.
Well, I'm glad that you do have knowledge of the community, and we'll, and it seems, and definitely, it seems like you're open to trans issues. So we'll just stay in communication, right? Yeah, there's no final answer to any of these issues.
I mean, the thing I'll say is, what we can do is that we can also, we can augment the city's Human Rights Commission because what we're talking about is not just passing laws, but enforcing them. And if people feel that they are discriminated against, then they have somewhere they can go to get restitution or to seek justice. That reduces the risk that it will happen again. It's a combination of enforcement, a combination of passing laws, but also enforcing laws that we have to.
I appreciate that. Yeah? Okay. Also, what's your take on, like, a lot of people reopening, right? What's your schedule plan? What do you think about that?
So I want us to be cautious about thinking about the things that we should be doing. So I have a son, he's eight, goes to public school in the district. And he's, and I think schools, particularly the lower grades, elementary and middle schools, we should work to get those open as much as we can. There's a whole host of reasons for it, but specifically related to the pandemic, they don't appear, the schools for young children do not appear to be what's known as a vector for disease transmission, for viral transmission. And I'm also in favor of beginning to move towards reopening eating and drinking establishments as long as we are still practicing social distancing. So we're at 25, 35% capacity. We probably can continue to slowly increase that capacity as well. What I'm not so sure about is like, you know, movie theaters and large concert venues, you know, where there's a lot of opportunity for a lot of people indoors to be essentially breathing each other's air and viral transmission. That, that we got to be careful about. We've managed to bring the virus load down to a much lower level than we pretty much since we haven't seen since the fall.
So probably what people are probably wondering about, right? They hear about like all these statistics. Honestly, when I, like, you know, I get that, something that's important, but people just want to know, are you going to reopen? What's the timeline? Do you plan to open it right away? When are we going back to normal? Do you have a plan to get back to normal? And when is that, when do you think that's going to happen?
Sure. Well, I mean, I will say that, should I have the good fortune of getting elected to the city council, I wouldn't actually take office until January. And I think the world's going to be a very different, and I believe, better place than we are today. Right now, it's March, you know, 10, 11 months from now, I think the world's going to be in a different place. Most of us are going to have gotten their shots, or at least have access to getting their shots. And we're going to be in a position by summer, and at least according to the president recently, every adult who wants a shot is going to get one by, he says by May, I think by
No, already last summer, yeah, I have like footage, thousands of people hang out in the park next to each other. Already, yeah?
And, but now, I think, but the fact is, before, there was a concern about the risk of viral transmission. I think it's going to be reduced because at this point, this time, this summer, people will have their shots. And that's going to, and also what's going to happen is that the masks are uncomfortable. But in the winter, at least, you could argue, you could use the excuse, ah, I sort of keep my face warm, you know? But, you know, you're clean shaven, but it's like another beard. But in the summer, it's annoying. Everybody wants to take them off. And I think as we start moving towards the summer, people have gotten their shots, that I think that the mask use is going to begin to diminish, and then they're not going to put their, they're not going to re-mask in the fall. So we're going to start to see, you know, lower rates of mask use, and it's going to, it's going to, you know, essentially going to be viral. Where people are going to, they're going to say, oh, I see someone's not wearing a mask.
They're just going to die off anyways. I get it.
And I think as we get to into the, into the fall and into the winter, that's going to diminish. And I think we're going to have a, it'll be much more normal by fall. And not fully reopening, but I could see a lot, I can see us getting pretty close to it. At some point, also, the number of people who are going to be infected and who are going to die from COVID will go to a number where we're going to be like, ah, it's like getting the flu, you know? We don't shut down the city when it's flu season, and we're not going to shut down the city for COVID. If we start to reach that point when we get those low numbers, I think we're going to be in that point. I'm following the science, though. You know, I know what I want, right? Like, I want it all open tomorrow. I want to be able to, you know, walk around and hug people with reckless abandon. I also know we're going to have to wait and see what the science says. But I think by the fall.
Okay. Look, there's, a lot of people say, you think about New York City, you think about New York State, there's a lot of corruption going on. But then a lot of people are afraid to name that corruption, or they don't really have any specific plans to take on that corruption. Do you have any specific plan to take on corruption, and how are you going to fix, or how would you fix that problem?
Yeah, I mean, well, I think specifically, the corruption at the top of the state has been, has been an ongoing problem. I think the governor has clearly demonstrated that he's interested in holding onto power, necessarily, not necessarily making people's lives better. And in light of both his poor handling of the
What about locally here in the city?
Oh, locally?
The city could challenge the governor. The whole city's council could come together and say, we challenge the governor. But I mean, like, you know, in terms of the local jurisdiction, you know, I mean, what's the plans?
I mean, I think this, I think the mayor has
Unless that is what you're planning to do, is that, is that one of your main, like, ideas? Like, you know, to take on corruption is to gather the city council and take on the governor?
Well, I mean, I think you're going to have a whole new city council that has different priorities than this current city council.
Yeah, that's also hard to, yeah, to put them all together like that, yeah.
And we made, we had a discussion about real estate before, and real estate money sort of infects everything in this city. And it is seductive. And you have a strong cohort of incoming candidates and likely council members who will have refused to take real estate money and will be less beholden.
Can you name any of these real estate companies, or any of these politicians that are taking money from the real estate companies?
Well, I mean, I think that the Real Estate Board of New York has formed a fund, REBNI, and they're the collection of the city's real estate developers. And they have been distributing checks to different candidates for office. It's, there's an article, I think, in maybe in Gothamist or New York Magazine, probably about a month ago, that started talking about it. And a number of candidates have taken that money. And that's
Do they have like a poster boy? Do they have a poster, do they have a poster boy or poster child?
You know, I'm trying to think of who probably was the lead candidate on that. I, I can't, I'm not being coy. I legitimately can't think
What's the story with Corey Johnston? Is he like pro-REBNI, against-REBNI? What's going on with him?
I don't know. Corey's talking about getting back in the game and running for a comptroller.
I'm going to try to bring him into a roundtable discussion with us to talk about housing because of his role with RAD and all that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm not sure, I don't know if Corey's just taking it. I mean, look, honestly, most of the candidates who are running for mayor, and I mean, just about all of them, at some point took real estate money previously in their lives. They've sort of had a more recently come-to-Jesus moment where they decided that they don't want to do that anymore. Okay, you know, but, you know, it's not like there's been a fair amount of consistency there. And I think the, it's also instructive that you have some folks who have been a little bit more strident about wanting to reduce the influence of real estate in the public policy arena, and others who are a little bit more tolerant of it. And I think voters are paying attention to that, and I think it matters to them. And that's why, you know, I've been clear about where I stand on it too.
At this point, who's your main competitor in the race, and why are you the better candidate?
Well, there are 15 candidates running for the 7th council district. I raised the most in matching funds of all of the candidates who are running. And I believe I'm the leading candidate. There are a few others who are running. Marty Allen Cummings, who was a drag artist, and they are, they're good people. I like Marty. And in fact, I think I wanted to make a, we haven't And in fact, I think I wanted to make a, we haven't talked a little bit about ranked choice voting, but I want to make sure that you are, you and your voters understand how ranked choice voting has created a new dynamic in city council races, especially with multi-candidate, candidates, you know, pools of multi-candidates running for office, there's a lot more emphasis, a lot more interest in being cooperative, in being collegial. And, and Marty in particular has, has encouraged a really positive cooperative tone, which is really lovely. I mean, this is the nicest kind of campaign that I have ever been involved in, he is extremely, he's really been sort of approaching it with love and joy. And while I believe I'm a better candidate than Marty, and I, you know, I'm sure Marty believes that they are a better candidate than me, I really respect them, and for the tone that they've set in the race. Corey Ortega is another candidate who's running, who also has demonstrated a real sort of joy and love in the, in the race. Stacey Lynch is another candidate, I mean, they, they, and, and I, I, it's curious, because when you run for city council or any office, you want to differentiate yourself from your opponents, you want to say, I'm much better than them and they're bad, but really, actually, it's been quite cooperative, because in the end, unless you think you're going to get 50% of the votes, you want to make sure you're making friends. And that, that's sort of creates a different dynamic and emotional reaction amongst all the candidates, and that has been really great.
I guess I do, it's, it's, it's a little weird though, because also like I come from like a activist background, so you know, a lot of times activists are taking on things, you know what I mean, and that's really kind of like the bent of this channel too. I do agree that like getting along is cool, but then also sometimes getting along means getting along with the machine, which is causing problems. So hopefully, you know, and also in the end, we do need to differentiate, right, yeah, we can all get along, but in the end, someone has to have, for some reason, be it experience, be it positions, right, someone has to say, I am the one, yeah?
And that's, I want to be clear that, well, I, I, it's actually not so much on policy, because I think for the most part, a lot of us agree on, on much of what we should be doing, which investing in more affordable housing, try to fix the school system, we need better trans, public transportation, climate change is a real issue, we need to have racial and economic justice in this city, I mean, for the most part, a lot of us agree on a lot of those issues, and, and whether we were combative or we were cooperative, I think our policies are relatively the same, the difference is I believe that I, I have more experience, I've lived in the district my entire life, I'm 50 now. I raised my family here, my son's in school here, I'm a graduate of New York City Public Schools as well. Some of my opponents have either never attended public schools or, or, you know, recently moved into the district or recently moved into the city. And I'm, you know, that, you know, welcome, we, we take everyone, but also I think if you're going to claim you're going to be a champion for the district, I think you have to demonstrate your core values, comes back to what I was talking about before, it's not just simply paying one's dues, but it's actually demonstrating through your work that you live what you, what you say, that you walk that talk, and I have.
Cool, man, how can people find out, like, you got a website, what's your social, like, how could, yeah?
Sure, so it's, it's cohen2021.com, I'm also on Twitter, it's Dan Cohen NYC, and I'm also on, on, on Facebook, again, Dan Cohen NYC. And it's the Seventh Council District, I would love to hear from your viewers and supporters, and if they have questions. There's also a new, pretty nifty new thing called REPT, R E P D, which is a, an opportunity for you to ask me a question, and then I can respond in a really, in a video in real time. It's a, it's a, you know, so on my website, you'll see it says, ask me a question, and that's a, it's a new thing that campaigns are, are doing, just, it's being rolled out, and that's been really fun. On there, I talk about my, about my position on defund the police, and I talk about affordable housing, and I'd be, you know, and that's where people can learn a little bit more about me too.
Well, you know, I'm just going to ask you, I'm actually going to use that, right, because I want to help that platform as well, so I'll go on there, I'll ask you a question, can I repost that on my, my YouTube without any problems, yeah?
No problem at all.
So if you also want to do that and ask a question, I guess this guy's open for, for creating content for you, so that's pretty cool, man. Hey, thanks a lot for this interview, you've just been one of the more informed ones, it's cool, you know, and I appreciate that for real, yeah?
I appreciate you, I appreciate your persistence, thanks so much.
Thanks, man, God bless, I'll see you on the next one, all right?
Be well.
Peace.
Thank you.
It's a dark day in our nation, when high-level authorities will seek to use every method to silence dissent. The truth must be told.
And if you want the truth, you need to check out independent media producers just like myself, DJ L7. You should subscribe and hit the bell icon to get notifications when I release a new video.
Truth of these words is beyond doubt.
That includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and of course YouTube. Unfortunately, we have definitely seen that these mainstream outlets will cave to corporate interests, so we encourage you to join our independently moderated communities of Reddit and Discord. We also encourage you to subscribe to us on BitChute daily motion, so you can see the content that YouTube doesn't want us to let you see. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video, that's right, it's time for us to tell you about the Taking Action Group. Do you need an activist, or maybe there's no activist around, willing to help with your cause, and you need to learn to become an activist? That's exactly why we're here. Every week, we get up with people from across the nation, in fact, even sometimes internationally, and we develop strategies and a game plan to address the issues that are affecting all of us. Every week, myself from New York City, and of course my co-host Lisa from Los Angeles, provide a coast-to-coast perspective on what's going on in the country. If you want to donate to help out with expenses, travel, equipment, you know, stuff like that, then I definitely appreciate it, and you could hit us off at Venmo or PayPal, thanks a lot. Hey, by the way, we also have a merch store, so check it out. Oh my goodness, it seems like you've reached the end of the video, so make sure you check out some of our other videos, make sure you subscribe, this is your last chance to do so, so thanks a lot. And looking forward to seeing you on the next one, hope you guys enjoy it. Please comment below if you have any questions or issues you'd like me to address. And if you're an activist, the time to make things happen is now.